Let us pray. Lord, we come once again asking for your divine guidance and direction on our new meeting today. Be with this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we seek to serve this city and to strive to make the right decision for its citizens. We ask your blessing and favor on our city manager, our staff and employees, and the citizens of our community. Be with those in attendance today and with us all throughout this afternoon. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion received. File the agenda. All favor. Close line signed. Hearings and reports. Commissioners, just want to welcome everybody to our new meeting today. Last time I mentioned that school started, it started without a hitch here in our area. And I think there's two on the platform. The first, Amanda had a milestone with her youngest being-
We're not talking about that, Marty.
His first day of high school. Where are you at? Want to go college yesterday, didn't you?
I did. I'm a senior and I was sophomore.
School started without a hitch. We want to also mention Labor Fest is coming out next week in Central Park at 2:00. There's always a big celebration in Catasburg all day. And then, last but not least, Rumpke, our recycling provider, is working on a final draft. You'll see it here in a few days, sending out the signup sheets for all those who want to sign up for voluntary curbside recycling. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Well, Commissioner, since you brought it up, are we going to do any online signup for the recycling?
Rumpke will do that. On the flyer it would say where they can go to do an online version. It's a trifold flyer, Commissioner, that if people don't want to go online, they don't have to. It's really cleverly done, I think. You put your name, the information, pull it back over, and mail it in.
So there is no, there will be no signup online?
No, they can sign up second.
Can we add that link added to the city?
Yeah, we're going to absolutely put that on second.
Okay. Because people have messaged, I think Marty and I both, they're eager to get signed up.
Yeah. Anything else?
I do have one more thing. 9:00 AM Saturday is the United Way 4K. It's a big fundraiser for them, and the mayor's got a registration in place. He'll be there. And somebody named Langley Sebastian, I don't know if you know her, but she's, I think, in charge of this race.
They have a daughter.
Yeah.
So you know.
And it's always been a big fundraiser for them, and I will, I'll be there. I'll try to keep up with you.
Yeah. Bring the wagon, will you? Good. Thanks for bringing that up. Anybody else, Commissioner?
I'd like to re-proclamation on behalf of Pathways, our comprehensive care center, who many, many years I worked with them in the school business and when it was Lansdowne, I don't know if it was anything before that, but it was Lansdowne for many, many years. I worked closely because I was over special ed for over 15 years in a school district. And we're blessed to have Pathways. We don't even know all the services you provide. We can read those brochures. We hear TV and radio spots, and it doesn't touch it, I know. In such a large area that you're serving. And I heard Ronnie on the radio this morning, I think, and did great interviews usual. Is she here? I don't see her anywhere.
Shocking Ronnie's not here.
Tell her I asked her about her wins.
She hasn't been in compliance.
Yeah, and when I see her, I know that, you know, Pathway's here. But I know the guy this morning, Tom Rumpke, was asking her about wins and losses. And it is true, you get a win, it's worth, it's worth the fortune when you get that one win, because you know it's going to reverberate for you. But we, we used to think with some of the mental handicapping conditions that we were all facing, and with the public law 94142 back in '75, where they hit with the mainstream, and it, and that's when I went into administration. So I was on the ground floor of seeing it all developed, especially over the next 15 years, of dealing with every categorical handicap possible within our school system. Pathway's always a resource, and now it's magnified into so many other appendages of behaviors not related to mental health conditions. And when we all relate so many things to not only alcohol historically, but to opioid use and every other drug that they can possibly ingest, and that you all, it's 24/7 at all your counties, facilities that you have. And I deeply appreciate the dedication of everybody at Pathways. We can't value the wins that you're doing for our community, because many times, we're always dealing with the other side that are causing the difficulties for you and for us and for our residents and so forth. But we have to keep up the fight. And I, again, from the mayor and this commission, we appreciate all the efforts of Pathways. Whereas Pathways incorporating the City of Ashland, served the community since 1967. Whereas they have proudly served as community-based center for mental health care and prevention, treatment of alcohol and other addictions, and whereas which also includes services for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities. And whereas their core values consist of respect, accessibility, empowerment, responsibility, competency, trust, and support. And whereas September has been National Recovery Month for the past 30 years, bringing much-needed awareness to the growing problems in our community. Now therefore, I, Stephen E. Gilmour, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as Recovery Month in the City of Ashland. And I'd like to present this to someone. Congress, I'd like to pretty much present you, everybody here with you, that my regards to all of the people in the trenches out there.
So we can, uh, give you everything?
Sure can. Oh, really?
Yes.
I don't know. I'm not big on pictures.
Just, just, no, we can.
You get by here, you get by here.
That might be a little bit fun.
Stand like this?
That's fine.
They ever have.
However you want to. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marty was dying to be in that picture. I know that I was.
I want Marty too. Come on.
Mayor, I'd like to also say that not only are we proud of the services you provide, but we are proud that you call Ashland your headquarters. And the 200-plus employees of Pathways, we, we know you're there and we appreciate all you do. And I also want to say hello Kyle. And Kyle is a success story. He's proved that Pathways does make a difference, and I'm proud of you, Kyle.
That was my landlord. And a different time.
Yes, much different time.
Must be paid up.
That's what they do. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, guys. Sincere.
Okay, City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. Got a couple of things I want to highlight today. First off, Mark was up last week at the Clean Water Professionals of Kentucky and Tennessee, where the wastewater treatment plant was awarded the Operational Excellence Award. And in a nutshell, that's reflective, I mentioned this at a June meeting, when facilities have one violation or less for the year to qualify. In the states of Kentucky and Tennessee, there, we thought there was about 23 that got this across the state, so this is really a big deal. It does show how far the wastewater treatment plant has come. They were under a notice of viol, or under agreed order previously, which we've met all the requirements to come out from underneath that agreed order. So again, success story. Mark couldn't be here today, he's got some things he's taking care of personally, but hats off to the wastewater treatment plant, everybody in the Department of Utilities for all their hard work that they've done. The second thing is, I kind of want to send this out here, put this out here as a teaser. Through the Kiowa, the City of Ashland's received $171,000 in service transportation block grant funds. This is just the first of many bus shelters that are going to be replaced in the city. We've got a $171,000 grant on this. This is down by the bus station. You're going to see, and finance is going to come back. Finance put the work into getting this grant and some other grants that equate to about, right now, we have in hand almost $200,000, and pending another grant for $150,000. Again, they're going to have a lot more details on this either the next meeting or after, but it buys a bus that you see on the consent agenda today, bus shelters, bike racks for buses, benches, trash cans, and that's it on that portion. And then there's some other work with the transportation grant for gutters, historical gutters. And the third grant that's pending for $150,000 is for sidewalk work. So I just wanted to point that out. You're going to start seeing those across the city here very soon. And then the last thing I wanted to announce, was we had this on Facebook, just to give our citizens a longstanding issue that we've had in the city, and we empathize with everybody trying to get through to the city, is the whole phone situation. Just a reminder, we did a lot more than just upgrade the phones. We're in the process of getting those numbers ported over right now, so they're, you're probably going to, you're likely going to experience some squirrely stuff that's going on. We ask for the community to be double patient, because you've been patient for many years on this. But again, you're going to, you're going to be able to reach somebody or get to an answering machine in the very near future. This combined with our effort to go to online billing, that can be, people will have the ability to pay bills online, that finances is doing the final stages of that, should dramatically improve our customer service to our citizens. So just want to make you aware of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. This part of our meeting is public participation. If you have an item not listed on the agenda you'd like to speak to, or any other issue you'd like to bring up, or address the board in some way, we'd like you to give your name and address, and hold your comments to five minutes or less.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. It's good to see you all today. I commend you on your new phone system and the online billing. I think that's great, so I'm on board. Okay, so I gave you a packet, you know, what I'm here to talk about today is the World War II Memorial Wall. You know, Rotary undertook this as a project four years ago, and then it kind of was thrown up for a minute, and I'm chairing it again, and we're going to get this thing built next year, which is the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II. I gave, we have, I'm here today, we met with the park board yesterday and got site approval on the riverfront. In the packet I gave you is, if you'll turn to that first picture, that is looking east. We would like to put it there, and then the other picture is looking west. There's plenty of room there. The number one question, well, there are two questions I get asked. Number one is, is my ancestor on that wall? And number two is, what about Korea and what about the other wars, Vietnam? If it's desirable for somebody else to put another monument, it will never be a wall, there will never be anything else like this. I don't know if there's one existing in the whole United States like this. It'll be a different kind of monument type thing, but at some point, we'd like to have that called Veterans Memorial Walk, or Veterans Memorial Park in that area. And I know that you won't approve this tonight, but I would like for you to consider approving this in a future meeting, the next meeting, if you'll get it on the agenda for me, to come and present. Kim Jenkins, I need to have a home for it before we can get the site drawing done. So we're moving along baby steps, doing everything right. There's been a huge ground swell of support for this. I've been asked many times, you know, when they talk about other wars, this was an existing wall, as you know, on 13th Street and Carter Avenue, with the 6,700 names on there. There's not a person probably in Boyd County that hasn't been touched by somebody fighting in that war. Men and women, there are a lot of women on that wall. Also, World War II was the defining event of the 20th century, not only for America but for the world. So we think this is a great way to honor, and when you look at that first picture on there, it does say Rotary, but that was just a mock-up. It will be from the citizens of Boyd County. Grateful citizens of Boyd County. So we are the instrument to get it done. And we have received a lot of donations. We're going to be our goal with no problem. I'm still looking for donations. I get them every day. I have a World War II veteran on my committee who's really excited about this, and I think everybody is. It'll be such a wonderful thing there, and be a huge draw to our riverfront. So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you to put it on the, on the agenda for the very next meeting so we can move forward with getting the site drawn done?
Will do that.
Okay.
Cheryl, thank you for working on this so long. I think you've been working on it even when I got elected, but I know, like a month after I got elected, you and I met on the riverfront, we talked about it and so forth, and then I think, I'm not sure how it got, you picked it up and ran with it again, and I admire you for that.
Well, I went off to be district governor for Rotary, so this girl was here for a couple of years.
That's good.
But the thing is, this site's even better than the one you and I talked about, Steve, because it is so important that we include our other veterans in this area as well. We can't forget, you know, the freedoms we have today. We have to thank our soldiers for that. All of them.
Yeah.
So I think this will be a wonderful thing, and hopefully, we can get it done either in May or September, VE Day or VJ Day. And we're moving right along. I just need to get that site drawing done. And it's coming along nicely. I have a new committee, and we've got citizens on there, and Rotarians, and people who are interested in this. And I think everybody in, in the city certainly, and in Boyd County wants to have this happen.
Well, I agree. I think hopefully at some point, maybe not a wall with names, but something could go up for World War I Korean, Korean conflict, which if you were there, you know, is as big a war as any, and could certainly be a lot.
Certainly, we have World War II veterans who are still living in Boyd County, and I talked to some of them, but they're dwindling. We started with this number one because there was an existing wall. So we had a pattern. We had, you know, we had one. Then, like I said, it was a defining thing. We can go, we still have Korean veterans, that should be the next one. World War I, there are no World War I veterans, so that should be maybe the last one, as we move forward to the end of more recent ones. And certainly, hopefully, I'll be a part of doing those other ones. Don't know if Rotary will take it, they're about to kill me for this, but anyway, it's going to be a thing of wonder, and really, I haven't done a lot of research, but I don't know that there's another one like that. There will, there are lots of monuments with World War II veteran, the names of World War II veterans who were killed in action. But for everybody who went, I mean, it's quite a statement how we feel about our veterans.
And I think that we could all work together to put up something depicting each of those wars in honor of those people, whether you have names or not.
That's right.
And I think they would appreciate it.
This one would be one of a kind.
Yeah.
All right. So will you let me know if it's on, when it's on the next?
Yes, please.
Okay, any questions?
On these, on these pictures, Cheryl, which way is it going to face?
Okay, if, I left it there, we looked at several locations, but this is so pastoral down there with that beautiful tree, you can see the river. It's just wonderful. Central Park was so, it would kind of get lost in there. We looked at some other things, it's just perfect there. So it will face the river, but the names are on both sides. The original wall was 120 feet long, this one will be 79 feet long. We are looking now at having the names done in aluminum, and you can guess why, because, you know, we're going to have an aluminum plant here, and it's another statement about that. It'd be a beautiful, shiny, wonderful thing there. And we owe it to them, the men and women whose names are on that wall, to do it right and make it lasting. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You see your work. Colonel Fied?
Sir.
Thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
Would you like to make any comment at all?
Get it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, good soldier. Anyone else?
Ann Perkins, 2603 Cumberland Avenue. I want to say to you, Mayor, City Commission, and staff, thank you for the completion of our handicap bedroom bathroom. We, Safe Harbor is located in the old TB Hospital. Our buildings were built in 1946. They are not handicap accessible. By you all helping fund this through the community development block grant monies, this was a totally appropriate way to spend that money. So we're housing about 150 women and children a day on that property. We're putting people back on their feet. I had a woman come in my office yesterday. She's finishing up her degree, and she's in our transitional program, and she's there with her 14-year-old son, and she's ready to move on and get a job. And she's just one of thousands of success stories that we have. So I cannot thank you enough. It has transformed that building into a really beautiful place for our families to live, and I can't thank you all enough.
Well, let me thank you and that whole institution out there on the hill. Again, we don't have a clue what happens every day, the comings and goings, and success stories and so forth, but just the thought of the number of people that come through there in a year, that you're saving lives, saving families in the process. And the great thing about this job is, it's finished.
Yes.
We don't do very many of those pretty quickly, you know?
Well, I mean, our buildings are structurally sound, is all I've got to say.
It has a couple of little beams.
Six inches of concrete with rebar in every wall and ceiling and floor, that's a tough building to work on. So they knew how to build buildings in 1946. If there's an earthquake or tornado, you want to be on our property, because I don't think they're going to go anywhere. But I really can't tell you all how much I appreciate it, the value of the dollars that were spent are so well-deserved for that clientele, and it's given them just a nice place to live and be able to get into and out of easily. None of those buildings were handicap accessible, none of them. And so we've done about seven and a half million dollars of grants over the last 20 years to renovate those buildings, and now they are really, really, really nice facilities that thanks to the City of Ashland, that really, Harbor Hill is a product of City of Ashland's help with Section 8 vouchers. We're the biggest user of the bus system in the City of Ashland. We appreciate that. I love, we're going to get a new bus stop, that's awesome. And I also have to shout out to our, our police and our fire for really quick response. It means a whole lot to us. They're up there in just minutes. And trust me, I know that we're kind of a test sometimes for the, especially with the fire department, when we burn a lot of popcorn and take a lot of showers, because that's what sets off our smoke alarms. But I, I do appreciate, and they're always so kind and so nice. But thanks to the city, I appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I meant to say, special thanks to DJ Lorraine for their great work.
They're on it.
They were on it. They were on it.
Thank you. Thanks, Ann. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Thank you all for being here. Old business, item A.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct mayor to submit the program year 2019 and amended action in Part 5, Compensation Plan J, step up a, the policies and procedures of compensation plan and classification plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended."
Have a motion? Any discussion? All favor? Close line signed. Item B?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct mayor to submit the annual Section 8 management assessment program certification to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all documents associated with the grant submitted."
So have a motion, submit.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close line signed. Item C?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct mayor to submit the annual Section 8 management assessment program certification to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all documents associated with the grant submitted."
So have a motion, submit.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close line signed. Item D?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct mayor to submit the annual Section 8 management assessment program certification to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development."
Submit. Second. Any discussion? All favor? Close line signed. Item E?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct mayor to execute a utility heat cost agreement agreement between the protective transportation cabinet, division of rideaway utilities, and the City of Ashland regarding work by the cabinet's highway contractor on Winchester Avenue, 9th and 10th Streets, at a cost of $1,835 to the City of Ashland."
Submit.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Close line signed. Item E?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky establishing the Ashland Tourism Convention Commission, establishing the funding of the commission by the transatlantic tax and the composition of its members, and repealing ordinance number 25, series of 1982, and ordinance number 8, series of 1997, of the City of Ashland, Kentucky."
Submit. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, with this final reading of this, this will establish a completely separate commission. With that being said, I just, so for the public's consumption, the board members will consist of representatives of the parties that are actually collecting the tax, and some citizens as well, or appointees of the mayor?
That's right.
We'll get seven, seven board members by statute, two, what we call for lack of a better term, wild cards, and then five others are representatives, three representatives of the hotel, one representing the interests of the restaurant, and one representing the Ashland owners.
Okay. And with that board, they really govern that entity.
That's right.
We don't, we don't govern that.
We don't.
Right. It's a separate corporate entity, quasi-independent.
Right. And with that being said, we, we want to work closely, obviously, with our city staff to make sure we're promoting the city in any way we can. The one thing I worry about, and it's been mentioned publicly, is the funding in the short term for the office, the tourism office. With their shortfalls and things like that, in the interim, how quickly do we see them possibly getting enough tax revenue to be self-sustaining?
Well, it's going to have a whole lot to do with the hotel, our hotel, when it starts really generating. But at the current time, you're exactly right, two-thirds of the revenues that they're taken out. But we're, I have talked to the staff there, and they understand, certainly on the, in the short term, there are going to be reductions in everything, and they understand that. So that's why we're trying to get this board to see it next week.
One. I'm not advocating anything today, but you know, we, we almost give 50%, if not more, of the operational funding for Ashland Motion and other agencies that assist the city with its mission. And I would ask the board to consider, as we move forward, at least in the short term, at looking at possibly aiding the tourism office so it doesn't cripple it, so that we can move forward responsibly in assisting them in completing their mission.
There is money, they have money right now, right?
Right.
I also think as part of this conversation, we look at the hotels in Ashland, and who is paying the bed tax, and who is not paying the bed tax, and Airbnbs and all of that sort of stuff are listed in this new ordinance, to make sure that we are collecting the funds that we should be collecting, because I contend that we are not.
Well, and that's really that board's responsibility.
Yes.
It is. Well, and we have discussed that after this adoption, probably early as next week, that I would prepare a letter, to the extent there are some changes from what had been in the previous ordinance that are authorized by state law and what's applicable, that we just prepare a letter to notify people what the changes are, and that they should then file their returns accordingly. So we want to get that information out.
Yeah.
We're very sensitive to the change, everybody, trust me.
I know, and that's what I, you know, we don't, we don't want to have a situation where they have just enough money to pay employees. We want marketing- We want marketing, we want things...
That's what it's about.
That's their mission.
That's what it's about.
And I don't want to cripple them to the point where they're unable to do anything because they don't have a budget, at least in the short term.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I know that if some of you, I don't know if you... A couple of y'all know we're there, but we had KET in here Tuesday night, and, you know, it really wasn't public science. And I really think KET played a major role in maybe public science more, but they... On September 15th, they'll begin 16-hour segments of Ken Burns, a country music in Kentucky... Country music in America, really, but they had reception at the museum, and it was very sparsely attended. We go to the Paramount, and I guess we're a couple hundred there, and it was one of the best things I've ever seen. They did about a 45-minute, on the screen there, excerpts from about eight different segments of the 16 segments. You know, they did a pretty long segment on Hank Williams Jr... Sorry, Hank Williams Senior. Old enough to remember when they announced he died, you know, out there in his car. But it's unbelievable to watch, and kind of a total background of George Jones, who came to Catsburg for, I don't know how many years, and what an attraction for them to get. And it kind of started with taking a stab, and he said, "Yeah, I'll come down there," and then he came every year. He could have appeared anywhere on later day, as you may say. And when you see his segment, and a segment by Vince Gill, that if you don't cry during that segment, there's something wrong with you. You need to go to get help. But I didn't cry, but I was close. But it was beautiful, and Ken Burns, I mean, he's a genius. He's a master. And this, you know, they had this kind of a... They did it in three cities, and Ashland was one of the three cities they chose, mostly because we're a country music town, like. And I was so proud of that, but disappointed that more people didn't come, but I don't... We heard about it, and we registered online. It didn't cost anything, but they did want to know who was coming and all that. If you didn't show up, trust me, you wouldn't have to do anything. Just walk in, sit down, enjoy it. But it wasn't publicized very well. That's the kind of thing... I mean, I'm telling you, we should have had the whole tri-state area of people flown in here to see that. Now, once they start watching it on KET, I think, you know, they'll see the magnitude of not just the state of Kentucky and our area, but the whole country. It is so well-done, like everything he's ever done. And I hope you know that Ken Burns is. I mean, from Major League Baseball to the Civil War is my favorite thing he's ever done, but he's done one heck of a job on this, too. So, keep in mind, KET on the 15th, they're going to actually do... I forget the date, but like a one-time beyond bluegrass music, which they showed a little bit of bluegrass origins in Kentucky and all, which obviously, you know, is some of the best entertainment you will ever see. But that in itself is a tourist attraction type of thing that we had the other night, and the message did get out there, and I was real disappointed in that. But we were looking forward to, as I've said countless times over last month anyway, we're going to do it right in Ashland, and we're going to be all right, like everything else. We'll do fine with it. So, thank you, Commissioner, for addressing that, too. No one else, okay? Do we have motion or sound?
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item C?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm saying...
Yeah. F, I'm sorry. Well, there you are.
Second.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky approving amended loan agreement with Tipton's Traditions LLC in the amount of $14,000, the remaining principal balance of the original loan approved by Resolution Number 6, series of 2017 due to a change in ownership with Tipton's Traditions and authorizing Mayor to execute the amended loan documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item G?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Southern Ohio Trenching and Executing Enk for a contract regarding the water line replacement on US 23 from 43rd Street, Ashland to 11th Street, Catsburg in the amount of $52,100 for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Distribution.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting and authorizing and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of August 22nd, 2019.
Someone?
Second.
I'm just so glad to see a local dealership selling trucks to the city. I mean, it just... Any times that we all said that, just since I've been here. So evidently, they're getting good bids in. That's the other thing is, I think they're going to make sure they're going to get them. Instead of... The way it normally works, you have a state bid that comes out of Frankfurt, and it cuts everybody. And I think we've said more than once in here, if legally possible, to anywhere close, we need to stay in the City of Ashland. People that...
This dollar is kept right back here.
Every dime comes back here, so... However how it worked out, I'm very proud that it's in here, so will be purchases.
Any questions on the consent agenda? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. New business, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct to Mayor to execute an reorder between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Commonwealth Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet Division enforcement authorizing payment of a civil penalty in the amount of $22,500.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item B?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct to Mayor to execute an amendment to the grant agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and WB Hospitality LLC adopted by ordinance number 177, series of 2018, amending Article 1 definitions and Article 3 agency's agreement to make grant dispersment received regarding the acquisition, construction, and financing of the hotel redevelopment project.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just the amount of money that we're going to be giving to the hotel, that's coming out of the general fund, so that's not out of the TIP bond, correct?
Actually, what was raised in the TIP was $4,569,081. In June, there was a budget adjustment on a portion of that money above $4.5 million to put the cement, to pull that out of the TIP. So, this recognizes the fact that there was a $69,000 difference in the original $4.5 million that came from a result of the sale of the bonds, that makes that money available to the hospital, or to the hospital, to the hotel, excuse me. So, what you'd expect at this point is that WB Hospitality, if they're spent... If they've already planned $4.5 million in finance, we'll have to tell us if they did that or not. You'd expect them to say there's another $69,000 that's there and submit projects that would either have to be accepted or not. So, really, just should we try to raise $4.5 on general obligation bonds? We got $4.5, $6.9, and that's what this reflects.
And as far as the TIP or the payback is on this, currently, how much money are we currently paying back on the repayment of those bonds at this time, since we don't have the tax revenue coming in yet? It's coming out of the general fund.
Finance, can you give that answer off the top of your head? Mr. Grove?
About three hundred dollars a year. We make two-year payments, probably about over half a million.
So, we have over $1.5 million that we're not receiving yet from the proposed taxes, increase in property taxes?
We have over $1.5 million that's being paid from general on behalf of these bill bonds.
And the expectation is, over time, though, that the increase in property values due to this investment will pay back that bond?
That is correct.
Okay.
And payroll tax?
It's multiple tax.
So, we're... So, right now, though, we're pulling those funds out of our general budget?
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Which would be the normal thing you would do in a case like this, so the money starts coming in. I mean, you have had any other TIP background, I guess, though, have, Mr. Grove?
Yes, I have.
You have? Is that the way it works?
I've not had one, no. Actually, the ones with the mall and stuff, set up similarly, I've been funded. They actually debt service.
Lot lower, lot lower bond issue, or not? I don't know. It's the first one I've ever dealt with, all the years I've been in office. That's okay. You don't have to have big discussion. I don't need one of that. I do know that they... I don't know they like the public side, but the hotel was $7 million over budget. And so, we have $23 million investment downtown Ashland, and the $69,000 is part of... It's just like you're selling your house, when you have a little bitty for it. We've got more for the $4.5 million bond than we anticipated, and if, you know, whether someone decides that we use it for plant trees or to give the hotel sidewalks around...
Essentially, what that money does is pay for the sidewalks that we put all the way down 15th Street, not just around the hotel.
That's true. So, anyway, I don't... In my lifetime, we've never had to invest $23 million downtown Ashland. I'm proud to be involved.
Yeah, it's a huge improvement. I was actually at the Winchester the other day, and the... I mean, it's unbelievable.
There's a picture on Facebook today. I'm on Facebook. I actually tried to be on Facebook. I don't even know what my password is, because my daughters do it. You know, I'm not there, so if you want to get on me on Facebook, that's why I'm not there. Oh, you can't. You have to do it to my face. But anyway, I get this picture of the hotel. I've got an evening picture, and of course, I can set it at my desk and look right at it, same to you, but it's going to do, I think, what we hoped it would, and that's to spread out and get more people coming in here.
Yeah, I challenge anybody to find a hotel of comparable style within probably 50 to 100 miles, or at least 100 miles.
Important to note, in terms of TIP, and I'm by no means an expert, but, you know, there's this idea that we gave this developer this money to put... And we just randomly... Or not randomly, but just we just gave it with no return. Not only is it the increased tax revenue from the hotel, it's the increased tax revenue in the entire district, which isn't real large, but it's substantial, that will go to pay this bond over the course of 20 years. I don't feel like this commission and the county commission saddled future taxpayers with this debt, because I'm confident that that district is going to be built to the point that we are going to see revenue above and beyond what we put out in the bond.
Absolutely. Let's all just keep hoping for a living.
All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item C?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky designating a handicap parking space on the east side of 16th Street in the 200 block and providing a penalty for the violation of this ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item D?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing to Mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Ride Dead Roofing for providing all labor, material, equipment, supervision, tools, and performing all work and service necessary for re-roofing the water treatment plant in River intake building in the amount of $150,000 for the Department of Utility Operations Division of Water Production.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item E?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky repealing ordinance number 21, series of 1997, which designated a handicap parking space at 1600 Queen of Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Item M?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct to Mayor to execute a contract from the City of Ashland and Service Pump and Supply Enk in the amount of $60,638 for the purchase and installation of the 26th Street Sewage Station channel grinder replacement for the Department of Utilities Division of Wastewater Collection.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item G?
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and GRW Engineers, Inc. in the amount of $32,470 regarding the contract provided by Engineering Services for the water treatment plant's skated design within the contract of the Department of Utilities Division of Water Production.
Someone?
Second.
And my understanding is that in the design work, where all the computerized equipment that's going to need to be up there, the air-condition units, we're concerned that they weren't at the... We're going to actually move the operations room from its current location to where they have a view over the filters, as it's done in the vast majority of plants. Because some air conditioning work had been done down there before, the assumption was that we've got new air conditioners, but you're challenging that space now with new computer... The analogy I make is you go to school, and they put computers in a room that wasn't designed for that, and it's boiling hot in there. So, this will address that, and in the second half of a mayor's, as a result of Department of Logedice report that requested or that recommended we look at backup to the backwash pumps, GRW designed a... I don't like to use the term backup, but an alternate method for backwashing, which we will either implement or not at some point, but they'll do the engineering for that.
Thank you very much. All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Item H?
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, "Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing direct to Mayor to execute a quitclaim deed of conveyance between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Michael A. Thompson and Marilyn J. Thompson regarding the acceptance of the donation of 3112 Central Avenue in East Ashland."
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Any other new business?
Mayor, I got a request. Sure. Don, off Chevrolet. I know it's kind of short notice, but we're having kind of a car thing.
We've already taken care of it.
Okay. Got you.
But thank you. I did have actually one more thing today.
I'm always having a drive-in Saturday.
Saturday.
And so, they asked to use our parking lot out here to help it overflow, which I don't... Maybe a lot of our employees come in, do a lot of work on Saturday down here, but they may have trouble finding a place, and they do. Yeah, thanks. Okay.
In today's newspaper, it was mentioned that the planning commission had... And there was an issue regarding chickens. The only thing I was wondering was that Mr. Wheeler had mentioned that it's something the county does?
Yeah, the way that works is they make a recommendation, either approval or disapproval of the proposed amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance. And they have a public hearing, which was held. Within 60 days of that public hearing, they formally transmit to this body their recommendation, and then you act on that, either approve or disapprove of their recommendation.
The only thing I was confused by was it looks like there was no action taken.
Well, the proposal was that the zoning ordinance text be amended. There was a motion made to approve that proposal or application. It failed for lack of a second, thereby resulting in disapproval.
So, that is by law, lack of the second, so disapproval?
It could have gone two ways. Somebody could have moved to disapprove, had a second and voted in favor, or went the other way. Motion to approve died for lack of second, so the request to amend was not approved.
So, we would have to act even though they disapproved?
Their recommendation, and it will come to you, it will be in effect that the request was disapproved, or that they recommend disapproved.
So, that's all? We don't have to act on anything?
You will act on that. You will either agree with that or disapprove.
Incur. That makes sense. All right. Thank you.
We have one other new matter.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I think the mayor has nominated for reappointment to the Ashland Planning Commission, J. C. Powers of 727 14th Street, Ashland, Kentucky, and that needs to be approved or disapproved by this board, this nomination of J. C. Powers.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close line, sign. Glad to see him back. Moving around to... Glad he's back. Anything else? Thank you all for being here. We're adjourned.